Okay, we're here on August first, two thousand and nineteen for a regular meeting of the New Market School Board. Call the meeting to order and start as we always do with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I'm gonna seek a motion to go into non-public pursuant to RSA ninety-one A, colon three, Roman, two, B, and C.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Aye.
Shelton? Swayzequist?
Aye.
It's, uh, written on public at seven oh three.
Yes.
Okay, we're back on here. We just came out of non-public and it's time for public comment. If anybody would like to approach? No takers? Okay. Well, let's go onto the, uh, school committee reports. Al, do you, uh, can you give us an update on construction?
I can't. Um, on schedule, on budget. Um, budget is, uh, tight. Schedule is tight. Progress is good, the elementary school in particular. Uh, if you walk through it, it looks very much done in a lot of places. The high, junior senior high school looks very undone everywhere. Um, it's wide open. Uh, sheet rock's going up. Floors are going in. Uh, it looks, at least now, you can kind of see what the spaces are within the junior senior high school where you couldn't two weeks ago. Uh, the administrative area is pretty well, um, buttoned up. Um, so the good news is we're, we're on schedule. Um, the, um, we were asked actually at our last, um, uh, Monday mo- morning meeting, uh, Tuesday morning meeting when we get together to look at, update with superintendent to look at, um, the likely, or the potential of moving this, moving the schedule up a little bit closer to the actual move-in date. And I can tell you from both of the, uh, site managers, um, they highly don't recommend it. Because they're gonna be squeaking right at the end to get it done. They're Thursday, Friday, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are final inspections. And you never know during the final inspection period what's gonna happen. Um, so, and is it the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth is it.
Okay.
Um, and, and there really, uh, was a lot of consideration on their part of how we could do it. But they, uh, the message was, was pretty clear that, that phasing it just wouldn't work. So that's an indication of how tight the schedule is. Um, my suspicions are they could even be using Saturdays and Sundays prior to that, still in the building.
We don't have, um, all staff reporting back till the twenty-seventh, but what I have planned for the twenty-sixth is, uh, new hire orientation. That will, for the most part, take place down here in the SAU auditorium. But the afternoon, I was planning on having their mentors meet up with them and then take them back to the schools, you know, to get familiar with it, but...
I think that's all possible. I, I was just trying to take the window of, can we squeak out a little bit earlier?
We would love that if it can happen. If it can't happen, we'll make do.
I know it. I know it. So, uh, but the good news is things look really good, um, on schedule and, um, moving ahead well.
Very good. Any questions?
Okay, well, the comments in my report actually relate to agenda items, so can I defer and speak?
Sure.
As we get to each item? So...
Do you, going down, do you wanna skip on down to this question?
Discussion, yeah. So, um, it wasn't necessarily my intention for us to actually discuss this. It was, it took me days to gather up these documents, um, and I haven't fully digested them myself. Perhaps you all are very familiar with them because you've been here a while and they're all, you know, um, you're familiar with them, but I, I'm not. So I thought with Jen being new, that if I could at least provide you with all the documents around, uh, the facility shared service agreement, job descriptions, minutes to the meeting so that there'd be a little context around it, that I think we would all benefit from it. I did point out, as I was reading through, at least my first read-through, a few areas that we may wanna have a conversation or, you know, about, and then, um, present, you know, some of our ideas to, uh, the town council at our shared meeting in September. So, you know, unless you would like to have a, a deep conversation, um, I just think we have everything together in one spot now so that we can, we can process this and, um, look closely because there's quite a bit of information here to digest.
Yeah, the chair of council suggests that we, uh, do a joint meeting on, uh, November twenty-fifth.
On what?
September.
September twenty-fifth, and that is a...
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And I can do it then. How about the rest of us?
I could do it.
I could do it.
I can do it.
And that gives us over a month to sort of digest.
And Susan, it's for me, you know, even being a part of all of it, it's always helpful to have a concise, uh, look at something with a fresh set of eyes. So I appreciate you taking the time to compile it before we get into the, you know, determining the next steps with that, before the next contract time.
Yeah, and I think too, because maybe many of these documents, I don't know that you all were familiar with them. In fact, it, I had to add so many people if there was a job description before I was able, actually able to find it. So that might even be new information. And then I also included it at the clerk of the works piece because, as I mentioned in my report, I provided you with a, a quote from, uh, our facilities director, you know, who, you know, shared his, um, you know, how he act, is currently allocating his time based on, on all of the demands on, on, on him. And, and the other thing to note too is that when he was appointed as clerk of the works, as I read through the minutes, that the, the board had also, uh, approved a part-time administrative assistant for him, I believe, but I'm not, I'm not confident that this is true. Uh, that that is paid for out of the clerk of the works money from the, um, building project. So it also said, uh, which was interesting to me, that the clerk of the works was budgeted for a hundred thousand and that, that this position, this administrative assistant position would be paid for out of that. And then any overtime that we have to incur, um, in order to cover the director's responsibilities so that he could perform that. So that was all, you know, kind of documented in there. So I think that history is really important, but the majority of his time is clearly spent as, uh, the clerk of the works for the school department right now, um, in, in terms of percentages.
Mike, do we know on the twenty-fifth a time, or is that from later?
Let's presume seven for now, but I can clarify that.
Okay.
For Tony. Yeah, I mean, I had to go back and dig for some of these documents too. It's good that we have them all in one, because they weren't, you know, it wasn't like a, you know, you put in a search term and they all, all came up, so this is good. So you had asked a question in your comments about clerk of the works and reporting and, and reports to the school board and, and kind of under what authority? There's two things, I think, and I can't name the policy number. There is, there is a, believe it or not, in, in, in our three thousand policies, there's one in there that pertains to clerk of the works and reporting to the school board. And that's also in a, um, in the, um, change order protocol as well, in the communication protocol, I think.
Okay.
Might have sent you that, but that, that's where that comes from.
I think there's also legislation, state legislation that requires it.
Yeah. And, and, and I interpreted to me that, you know, the, although the official reporting relationship is to the school board, doesn't have to be exclusive. For instance, if a clerk of the works has something of interest pertaining to the buildings, in addition to telling the board, I think he would simultaneously tell the superintendent who's equally interested, so, you know. So I don't, I don't, I don't, I didn't read it as they exclusively, you know what I mean? So, um, as a practical matter, um, we all should know.
So I, I can pull that policy and then send it along to you so, so we have everything in one place, which will be, I think enormously beneficial for all of us.
And the other thing, Mike, you'd know better than I, but I also think that the budget for the clerk of the works, um, was not an annual, was it an annual budget or a total building project?
It was a total amount allocated for that, for the whole...
So it's a hundred thousand for two years, no, it wasn't two years, two, three years, plus the, so it's wa, it's way under...
It was wa, it was wa, it, it, it should be three and maybe plus times that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think the other thing that I would like to mention because there was confusion when I would ask people, you know, does he receive compensation for the clerk of the works? And some people thought he did, and other people said no. So I was able to verify he does not receive any additional compensation for that. But I think it's good to say that publicly because I've heard a lot of things, um, you know, as I was, I was trying to find out what the facts are, and that was one of them. So that, that's urban legend and not fact. He does not receive any additional compensation for providing those services to us.
All right. Anything else on that for now? So what, so let's, let's read through that stuff and, um, I think we oughta, if we all agree, tee that up as one of the topics? To talk, to talk about what the town council proposed that we talk about with them?
Mike, can I make a sec?
Yeah.
Might I propose that we move the agenda up to let these...
Yeah, for sure.
Fellas, um...
Yeah, good idea.
So they don't have to sit there and listen to all of it.
Now, where are they on this agenda? Allison, are you just here to observe?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I thought you might have had a presentation.
No. Scouting.
Gotcha. So nobody's waiting on us?
I think he very much does.
Okay. We've done that before, two hours in. Okay, so, um, there's no other committee reports and let's, let's look at the calendars for future, make sure we're on, on the same page for future school board meeting dates. I mentioned to everybody by email today that I cannot do Monday for, um, this Monday for the retreat.
I thought it was Tuesday.
The Tuesday was the retreat, but then, uh, we were gonna move, you and I talked about, well, let's move it to Monday 'cause many of you had it on Monday instead of Tuesday, but I can't do Monday either.
Yeah, so I'm gone next week, so, um...
Mike, I, I appreciated your offer to, um, allow us to proceed without you, but I think that it makes sense for all of us to be there. That's, that would be my preference, just assuming we can come up with a date that works.
I don't wanna drive the agenda, but I'm gone from the fourteenth to the twenty-first.
So that's a week, okay.
I can't remember Elizabeth, it's, it's gone.
I don't remember. She's, and I, I don't know. I'll be gone from the ninth to the seventeenth.
So, um, in, and I, I s, I think that last week of August is pretty hectic, getting back to...
Last week.
Oh, yeah.
That's, forgot about it then, probably, right? Uh, what do we see here? Crazy idea, Susan? What are we doing? No, no, you're gone. Um, let's think of that, but you're gone. Um, let me see here. I mean, the twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth are possibilities?
All those.
These are, there's...
Yeah.
I can make any of those work. Okay. Anybody have a preference?
Yeah, I'd rather not do because if, if I do find out that the building project will allow us, like, we'll be able to get in that weekend, I wanna be here with staff helping.
Gotcha.
So, uh, I, my preference would be like a Thursday, you know, I mean, sooner the better be, just because of that. If I get news, then I, you know, I wanna be able to mobilize.
And we, we're gonna do from what time?
Three, with three to eight, I think we had, and then I can have Penny find us a location.
As an alternative date, if, if, if Elizabeth can't do the twenty-second, is everybody good on the twenty-third? We are, okay. We'll just, we'll just keep this open and, um...
As a, as a rating, so to speak.
Yeah.
And then on the twenty-seventh, um, is the first day of, uh, kind of school for, for our staff. And, um, so if you can just keep on your calendar, just mark off from, let's say, and I'm not clear if we start at seven, seven to four to five, but then I will get back to you. So if you can just block off from like seven-thirty until ten o'clock in the morning on your schedules. That should accommodate whatever time we, we start.
Okay.
So that you can be with us, participate in our opening activity.
So, so for the old guy here, can you go through one more time?
Yeah, Al, so on the twenty-second of August, from three to eight, uh, that'll be the retreat. So we, we'll have nothing next week.
And we can cancel the fifteenth.
The school board meeting?
I think so. I mean, I don't, can't think of anything.
Al, you're gonna be gone anyways, so...
And I'm gone too.
Okay.
I mean, there's no, I can give you an update on hiring.
And the alternative?
'Cause you've given me the authority.
Yeah.
The alternative is the next day, the twenty-third?
I'm sorry, Al?
Do we have an alternate date for the twenty-second?
Yeah, it'll be the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, same.
So, um, let's, let's not meet on the fifty. Cross that out. Um, okay. And then, um, moving ahead to September, I wanted it just to talk about September 'cause, so people know at least a couple months. Um, I'm refreshed, uh, in my memory from Kim that we do meet on the first and third, uh, Thursday. So those, those meetings are consistent. On the fifth and the nineteenth, the regular school board meetings, um... So Al, you won't be here for that, I'm sorry, I'm stepping back. On the twentieth, we have a building committee meeting. You won't be here. I'll, I'll, I'll...
Can you cover?
Yeah, I'll keep it going, yeah. Might as well keep going on that, um... Right now, other than on the twenty-fifth, Al, is the town council meeting, twenty-fifth of September, September.
Yeah, I got that. At seven.
I think that's good. All right. Um, so like, moving on to, um, approval of minutes for July twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Sarah, thank you for those minutes. They look great. Um, if, um, can I, uh, have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
That's for the July twenty-fifth, public and non-public minutes. Any discussion changes to those minutes? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, the use of facilities of policy.
So I had provided you with what you had approved, um, back in April, and, um, it has presented a challenge for our renters because after you had adopted that, there was no communication that was sent out to the folks that had been renting your facilities for, for a period of time. And that, in my experience, presents a problem for them because, uh, typically, you know, they're, they're advertising, um, for their various programs, certain fees, um, and collecting fees for students or, or adults or whoever their, uh, you know, target audiences, uh, to participate. So this came up with, um, recently that one of these renters contacted us, as they have historically, filled out the application and learned that the fee was going from twelve hundred dollars up to about eight thousand dollars. And, you know, they had all these kind of gears in motion, um, and, uh, so they had requested if, if there was something that we could do. So that's how it came onto my desk. So I, I did a little bit of homework and I found out, as I said, that nobody had contacted these folks to give them some kind of a heads-up so that they could make some adjustments or have time to seek other locations, um, to run their programs. So what I would recommend is that, um, we, we implement the fees kind of in a graduated fashion so that we can give folks notice. So maybe it would be, you know, this year, the fees are implemented at fifty percent, um, or a third this year with, with advance notice so that folks can build into their, uh, materials, you know, the, the increase that they'd have to pass on to the, to the folks who would participate in their programs. Or we give them time to be able to look for alternative locations, um, for their program. So, so that would, that would be my recommendation. We can send out a, a letter, whatever, I don't know what, um, I, I did ask, um, our business administrator if there was any implications for doing this. Somebody had mentioned that there was some kind of a, uh, an equity issue that you had to attend to in order to maintain your bonding status as a nonprofit or something like that. Um, so I kind of dug into that. And, and the issue really isn't how much you're charging for your fees, it's that you treat everyone consistently. So, um, with that in mind, you know, uh, adopting this approach I'm suggesting would not in any way jeopardize, um, your status in that regard, so...
If I can just, Jen, a little history on this, you might not have been aware. So a good thing happened when we opened our new gym. Everybody wanted to use it all at once. And, and so, um, we, we, this was back earlier in the year when the gym opened, I think it was around March, and we realized that our policy we had at the time was, um, our chief concern was it, was it, wasn't, it didn't have any way of, of prioritizing who got to use it. You know, is it rec basketball, or is it jump rope program? Is it, you know, somebody who wants to rent it, you know, for one night? You know, so that was the chief, um, reason we changed things, so we, we could set up a priority. And, and I think we achieved that. That's different to the issue Susan's talking about. Then we also changed the rate structure for use at, at the same time. That's been the problem. It's like, you know, doubling or tripling or even more of the rent overnight, if you will, for, for like, I think it's a jump rope program who's been using it for years. You know, so it's just kind of a shock to their system.
And I, when, when I heard this, Susan, I, I was sort of dismayed by it 'cause I had assumed that the communication had happened and so I was sort of sad. I, I knew we spoke about, you know, specific organizations 'cause there were specific contracts in place, but I just had assumed, I was sort of saddened here that it hadn't happened.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think, I think, Ken, the reality though, even if we had communicated it three months ago, it wouldn't have made any difference.
That's true. It wasn't enough to lead time.
The, the issue, the, the issue is how much it is. I mean, it is, boom. So this will give them opportunity to continue and they won't, you know, necessarily have to go find a new space. But if communicating that, you know, this is a graduated rate here and, and you, you may get to the point where this isn't feasible for you, so you got a couple of years to kind of look elsewhere, right?
Right. And I, I honestly don't recall, um, hearing about an eight thousand dollar increase for any organization. I think my ears would have perked up if I heard that, just for the very reason. So I, I, I agree we oughta do it. I'd like to see, um, without a lot of work, you know, who are the folks that are doing it? You know, what is the, if that's easy to get.
I can give you this instance. Um, I, what I did is I, um...
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. I requested a report from the business office to give me a list over the last two years on who were those renters. So I do, I do have that. I can bring it with me here tonight, but I, I did ask for that. But I didn't, um, go one step further and then to say, how does this now translate to them? Because as soon as I saw there was a list of them and I learned that nobody had been, um, you know, informed, I just, I just said, this is not the way that we want to kind of interact with our public. So I, I figured I'd make a plea to you, um, since there's no implications. It's not like we were counting on additional revenue in this area in order to support our budget this year. There was like, there was no reason for me, um, to feel that it, it was... Yeah, I ca, I will say in fairness, I was told it was on the website, but I, I have struggled to find information. I did search for it on the website so that I could see how accessible was it, but I, I, I struggled to find it, although it is there. but I, I, I struggled to find it, although it is there, um, it just wasn't-
Jump out at me.
It didn't jump out at me, so I'm, I'm sure that folks, and, and again, if you've had long-term relationships with people, they wouldn't have been looking there anyways, they would've called who they called last year.
Right.
So, so anything, I ju- I just feel like, you know, we ought to give a nice letter to folks, thanking them for, you know, being good partners with us and explaining it, and I'm happy to, to write that on your behalf and send it out. Um, what, what I would like your direction on, um, is, was where your, um, you know, tolerance levels are, so I had written a suggested motion, but I left it kind of blank for X's, I wasn't sure, um, how you wanted to approach it.
My, my thought is, um, because I can't s- I, I don't have the list in front of me, and I don't know the impact.
Yeah.
Um, I would be very tolerant as we walk into this change. I'd be very conservative about what kind of increase they would receive.
Yeah, so would you want-
Give a chance to-
To make the adjustment, that's, that's the way I feel.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna throw out numbers, but, but let's not have people, you know, running to Dover trying to find a place.
And, and my main concern with it, outside of the bond, just as a practical course, is that we're being equitable with the groups.
Exactly.
Right.
Um, you know, that, the, the, whatever decision we make in terms of modifying it, happens across the board inconsistently.
Yeah, so one way you could do that, so we do have to attend to the equity issue, so I can't just one-off-
Right.
With folks, we have to have kind of a policy. So, one way you could do that is to say, since folks have probably already geared up for this year, maybe you do, you know, whatever the fees are, a third, you know, of what your, your ultimate fee structure will be, would be implemented this year, with notice that the full fee would be next year. Or you could do a third this year, two thirds next year, and full implementation in the third year. I, I, I really just don't know what your thoughts are.
The, the latter sounds fine.
That feels good.
A third, a third, and a third?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I'll, I'll put together, so that, then you could just have the motion reflect your, your desires there.
Okay.
So it would be incrementally over three years-
Thirty-three, yeah.
And, uh, based on a thirty-three percent of the adopted fee structure.
Yeah, may seek a motion, uh, yeah, a motion to authorize the administration to implement the facilities use fee schedule incrementally over three years, fees in physical year twenty nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty will be based on thirty-three percent of the adopted fee structure currently existing, and for FY twenty-one, it would be sixty-six. And for FY twenty-two, it'll be a hundred percent of the current fee structure. So-
Second.
Any just further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you very much, I will send a letter out next week and I'll inform the folks that are in immediate need of an answer, um, before I leave tonight.
Thank you, Susan, that's a, that's a good solution, and it didn't, it didn't occur to me that somebody would get, you know, would get hit so hard immediately, but I-
I don't think any of it-
That change, so. Great.
When you sent this out, I just, I just was surprised, um, and it's just, I guess, just a comment, but I didn't realize that reservations, uh, for folks are made through the facilities department. I was wondering why they weren't made at, by the head of the facility.
Well, y- you know, one of the things I observed when I was reading through this information when I got it is that your policy says that it will be through the building principals, because, and, and, but the procedure doesn't connect to the policy at all.
Yeah.
So that's something that, that we can, we can work on, because-
This doesn't make much sense to me.
It, it really is, is not aligned, the two pieces aren't aligned, but I, you know, we can work on making a recommendation for you moving forward that better aligns with your policy.
The practice.
It, it makes, it, it seems to me that, and typically this is done at the building level, because they know what they have going on.
Right.
They know when they're scheduling afternoon activities, and, you know, the buildings are first for educating the students here, you know, second, I would say-
Yeah.
Supporting community events or, uh, for youth, and then for adults, um, and they would be the ones that, that, that it would make the most sense to me, that would be the-
This is, now that you're jogging my memories, Susan, on a related issue, that, that, that we may wanna consider at some time. When we, this is, Al, what, what was it, three years ago, we were touring other school districts, maybe more, looking, you know, before we did, had a design of our own, you know, may- maybe it's four years actually now, and most of those schools had a program that, you know, you, you know, it's scheduled at the building level, but it, it, it's, it's, everybody can see what, you know, what's available and when. You just go online or whatever, and, and all the, I mean, it's school dude, I think.
School dude is the one that's used in the industry.
Yeah, so it's like, that would-
We use that in mascanama.
That would be ideal, cause then, then, you know, because, you know, we're, we're, especially when we, when we get the, um, the cafeteria up and running, because the, the theory anyways, was that a lot of the elementary performances would take place up there, and rather than people making calls and, you know, doing it the old-fashioned way, if it was just sort of scheduled and uploaded to a cloud, and everybody could look at it, and, you know.
And we also encourage the community, uh, to, to use these spaces, and I just, I'm beating myself with the building, man at the building principal would have a better, I think, ear for priorities.
I agree, and usually what you do is, um, there's an approval process, at least, you know, this is the, kind of the best practice, is that, um, applications for use would come in to the, to the main office, and that, that person then checks with the athletic director to make sure that nothing is interfering with the time, checks with the facilities folks, and makes sure that they're not in the middle of a repair that's going to interfere with those particular dates. Um, and, you know, checks with the various parties and gets, gets kind of, uh, a sign off, and then, um, and then they can move forward with that. So it's a, it's a very, there's other systems besides school dude, but school dude is one that's popular, uh, for work orders, use of facility scheduling and, um, maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, stuff's up and down the road, wonder when we come up for air.
Yes.
Um. Math tutor.
Okay, so, um, we are actively writing, um, our federal grants, we got our allotments, uh, that were shared, and so this is the time of year that the grants are written, and Principal Pine would like to, um, use- use the grant money to, uh, some of the grant money to, um, employ a one-point-oh math tutor to support, um, the everyday math program that we have. My understanding is that last year, he had, um, put in a part-time math tutor, but that never got translated into your budget proposal to you, so nothing was ever moved forward, so you never kind of sanctioned, um, a math tutor for the FY twenty budget. So, uh, our request is for you to allow us to add a one-point-oh math tutor at the elementary school, um, and that it would be funded through the Title One grant this year.
Any discussion? What I was thinking about?
I'm just thinking about, um, I don't think we have, as, as a board, have we, um, had this presented to us in the past?
Boy, I couldn't, I couldn't say for sure, Al.
So I'm trying to figure out a role in this, I think, if you're-
You have authority over the budget, so the way it was explained to me is that when your budget is presented here, there's several buckets of money that support it.
Right.
When you approve your budget, you're approving a staffing plan that goes with that, regardless of where it's funded from.
A staffing dollar or plan?
I call it a staffing plan, so, so many math teachers, so many English teachers, so many, that is, you know, underpins, you know, your budget. This position was not in that plan that you approved, it had apparently been in the prior year and was dropped off for some reason. So, therefore, since you have budget authority, and when you adopt a budget, it's a policy that we have to follow, without having that have been included, I felt it was important to bring it to you to, to sanction this before we move forward.
I think that, that's right, even if it's gray, it, it doesn't hurt for us to sort of-
It's, it's transparency.
No, I, I'm-
There's another, what, there is a full-time teacher in there that was in your staffing plan, that underpins your, your, your budget. This was not there, the, 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 the teaching staff position was there, but this, this was absent, so.
This is just my ignorance, I've been on this board long enough to know the answer to the question, but, like, it, it's generally my understanding, if you have a salary budget of X, um, is during the year, if you decide to bring in a half-time math teacher and eliminate another position, you could do that, is that correct, or am I incorrect?
You have ultimate authority to appropriate money and, and positions that go along with that. It's my belief that if you do not approve the funding of a position, and the FTE that goes along with it, that I don't have the authority to hire that position, even if I have more or less money.
May I seek a motion? I don't know if we're gonna solve this tonight, but just to move on, fair, fair point, but I, I don't know, I could-
I don't know either.
You may have a motion to approve the math tutor under section C as described by Superintendent Givens. All at once, motion I ask for.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion, can we, we'll table that broader issue, um, if, if, if we can, and then, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, okay, use of facilities for town elections.
No.
It's coming up, it was a-
The answer is no.
So, um, so the town clerk and the town administrator approached me, I think it was Thursday of last week or Wednesday, and, uh, wanted to request the use of our elementary school, actually our high school, um, for the town elections. I shared with him that, you know, our building at the junior, senior high school would not be ready, um, that we'd be under construction, so that that wouldn't be really an option for them. So they would like us to, um, allow them to hold the election at the elementary school. The challenge for us is that, and, and I'm not saying no, I would support doing this, and I think we should, we should, but the challenge is that you've already approved your, um, calendar for next year, and it has been published. And, um, my understanding, based on conversations with a number of people, is that when you've done this in the past, that we've used a PD day, so that you could cancel school for kids, but the staff would still come, and that we'd do PD either in that building in conjunction with that, or at the other location. So, which sounds wonderful, but this year, um, the, the day that was selected for PD happens to be the day after Martin Luther King Day. So, uh, families are likely to make plans for the extra-long weekend, thinking that they don't have to have their kids here. So, so that's really our conundrum. Um, if, if this was on a Thursday, I don't think it would matter one iota if we changed it to the following week. It's the fact that it's, um, aligning with a long weekend-
Right.
In January, that I think it presents the problems for families. So, I've, uh, uh, one way that we could, could do this, I, I would say yes. So I, I feel like we have two choices, one is that we, we continue with the document as we've published it, and whatever the election day is, we can call a snow day, which just means that we're gonna be in session one more day later in, in June, and I would argue that you don't get a lot of educational value out of your last few days of school. So, so from an instructional standpoint, that's not, you know, doesn't make me want, you know, super happy. But, um, the other thing, you know, perhaps we could do, and you would know better if there's any precedence for this or, or not, is that we pull that day off the calendar and put a note in our calendar saying that when elections are scheduled, that this PD would be, uh, would be added to our calendar at that time. I did reach out to the, um, President of the Teachers Union to see, you know, to get, get her thoughts on it. I did talk to Principal Pine, um, Principal Mazzoni was, is on vacation, so, um, they both felt that, you know, that would be a reasonable thing to do. If we're gonna do that, I wanna take it off the calendar now, before we start the school year, to give people lots of, uh, advanced notice. I then also went back to, uh, our town administrator, um, and asked, you know, when is it, when would we possibly hear about when this primary would be? And he said, you know, it's likely we wouldn't learn until November or December, what the actual date was, so, you know, it's not ideal. Um, we do know the date that they need for the general election in the following years, the third, we can build that right into our calendar, it's, it's no problem at all. In fact, uh, you know, I, I said to the town clerk, if you can just tell us in December what's on the horizon before we build the calendar, then it's really not, you know, we'll know to, you know, uh, do something different with that January date. But, you know, we're, we're just, we're a little off-cycle on this, so, I, I'm not offering a, you know, a, a good answer for one way or another. I would rely on you to, to know what would be best, um, or if there's past precedent for, for how something like this has been handled before.
I don't know if this, this really adds anything to it, but typically when we voted, and we had, you know, high school, I wonder why they wanted to do it?
They asked for that, but the building's not ready.
Oh. It will be ready.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, I think, was it last year that we modified the calendar afterwards for a similar? And I, I think the, the benefit that we have is if we choose to, to modify the twenty-first date and move it to a more floating date, to be determined later, I think we are giving people ample amount of time to ma- to modify their plans. And I, there probably will be some people that are still going to be affected, but that is just what's gonna happen. Um, but I think it's ample time to, to have sort of, notifying people that there's gonna be sort of a floating day. It's, again, it's not ideal for families to plan their lives that way, but I, 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 I understand your reluctance to add a day on to be, without, cause there's gonna be snow days as well.
And I'd just like to do it before the school year begins, so that, that we're telling them now, um, and teachers, which I'm sure will ruffle a few feathers, but I also think that, you know-
And the President of the Union said, and that, that she thought they would be okay with it?
Yeah, she, she thought most would be, that there'd probably be a few folks that would, you know, be unhappy about it, but, um, you know, she thought that, she agreed that, uh, it, it's better to have an instructional day, um, you know, in, in January than the last day in June, so. And we'll just have to own that, you know, we realize that this might be an, an unfortunate change to some people, and just apologize, I don't, I'm not really sure what else we can do.
No, I mean, it's, it's an attempt for us to be good citizens of the town, and to help facilitate the voting process.
And I think, cause I always like to look at the brighter side, that it also gives folks, uh, reason to have to come to the elementary school that they've paid, um, a lot of money for, um, to see the fruits of this labor, so.
So, here's my silly question of the evening, my first one. So, why couldn't we just have this, like, we can't have voting in school at the same time, cause of parking, is that the issue? Like, people couldn't come into the gym?
It'd be a very disruptive night, so at the elementary school, there's, the parking is in the front of the building, as you know, and they'd have to go through it.
Right, I'm just saying otherwise, if we had unlimited parking, we, we, we'd shut it down anyways, cause of security, um, yeah, okay, all right.
I was told that people, when you're going into an election in New Hampshire, I, I think it was the town, somebody told me, maybe not the town clerk, that, that people can carry, that would make me very nervous-
Yeah, that would be good.
Around kids, when you think about that, but, yeah.
All right. I love it, um, okay, so, um, I don't know if I asked for a motion, uh, but I will now. Okay, the motion to, um, approve the use of the facilities for the town election on the dates indicated.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need to say that we don't know the date of the Jan, the first one, since we don't, and, and are we?
And alter the calendar, I guess if you approve it-
That's, that's what I was, right.
You're the approving body for the calendar, that you would modify the calendar to, uh, make that PD day in January floating. I, I didn't, when I wrote this, know all these details, I'm sharing with you right now, sometimes it takes me a little digging to, to the bottom of some of these.
Second.
I second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And then the health insurance ratio.
Yeah, this, so this was brought to my attention by, uh, the school business administrator, that, um, there, there are three employees that are being paid at a higher percentage ratio, that pay a lower percentage ratio than other employees in the school district. And that, um, when you made these health insurance changes, um, that this, this came to light, and, um, the previous superintendent and this business administrator, um, approached these individuals and, um- administrator, um, approached these individuals and, um, suggested that, you know, we reduce their contribution, uh, or increase their contribution to, to be fifteen percent instead of eleven and that for this upcoming year, since they didn't have a prior heads-up, that the district would, you know, reimburse them for the difference between the two as a one-year mitigation, uh, measure. So I said I would bring it to you, um, and, uh, since it's a, a matter that impacts a contract with an employee and that's in your wheelhouse, that, uh, I would bring it to you for your consideration.
I would say, you know, just my, my comments is I would tend to defer just so long as it's equitable, it's a fair thing to do, um, especially if somebody's been, you know, told that. It's, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's treating like situations in a like, like manner. There's, there's nobody else who's sort of left out, if you will, other than that, I. In terms of the money, it's, uh, it's already in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I agree.
Can I seek a motion then to approve that proposal regarding the health insurance ratio? And you might have better language in there. Okay, to, uh, I'm gonna seek a motion to approve the recommendation of the school business administrator to transition the three employees who are paying lower contribution ratios for health insurance to eighty-five percent effective this year and pay them a one-time mitigation reimbursement to ease the transition, transition, the total cost of which is one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. I have that motion.
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Yes, so, um, I've prepared a draft of a, a pretty standard SBA job description for your consideration. Uh, I've made note of an amendment, um, to the section under facilities management to read insurers as opposed to the existing language that's there. And, um, by approving this tonight, um, I would be able to move forward with posting so that we can get a replacement for our outgoing SBA.
Any further discussion on that? If there's none, may I have a motion to approve the, uh, school business administrator job description?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the next one, it's really information, I guess.
Well, the, the next two actually require, from my reading of the documents.
Mm-hmm, yes.
It says the board, so.
I was thinking ahead.
So apparently there's a, a contract between Epping, uh, Public Schools and New Market. That is an arrangement that you have to have like a co-op football team because both districts are very small. Um, I've read through it. It seems pretty standard. Um, it, it establishes kind of the terms and conditions around that arrangement. We would, you know, co-hire coaches, for example, that our district would pay so much money per student, for every student that was on the team. Um, in, in doing a little bit of research, the fee is not increasing its. Change to what you had approved in prior years. So I would recommend that you approve it as presented.
Any discussion? May I have that motion, please, to approve the two thousand nineteen, twenty football contract between Epping and New Market?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the next item is, um, we received a letter from Rawlingsford School District who is requesting information. Um, they're asking if the board would entertain the possibility of, um, allowing that school district to merge with our SAU so that we'd be then a two-member SAU as opposed to just a New Market. Um, and if there's any interest on the part of the board, then, then they would like to have a conversation with us about that. And if there is no interest, um, then, uh, they would like to know that as well. So, uh, I figured I'd just present it to you and, um, I think I know where the community and boards stand on that. Um, but in case there's any desire to expand, um, I figured you would share that with me.
Any discussion? I, uh, I would just thank Rawlingsford for reaching out.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate the, the request and, um, I, I won't speak for the board, but I, I may be thinking that right now is we've sort of got a list on our plate, so it's probably unlikely we'd consider that in the immediate, near term. Uh, does anybody else feel differently or have any other comments?
So that would be, how you wish me to respond to their inquiry?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. Um, and then you gotta, just got the manifesto out.
I do. Make a motion to approve the, uh, August, uh, August first, uh, two thousand nineteen, uh, manifesting minor one hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then nominations.
So since our last meeting, um, there has been several, um, employees who have been interviewed and are brought forward for your consideration to elect, um, for the FY twenty school year. So the first is, uh, Carlee De Louw. Um, she is an art teacher at the elementary school. Um, she has a master's degree from the University of New Hampshire and has, uh, several, um, years of experience in teaching elementary art. She's also a summer camp counselor and has been doing that for quite some time. Um, so it gives her a lot of exposure to, to students, um, outside of the art arena. And, um, she, uh, in our interview together, she talked about how she has a real love for the, for the younger students and, um, is very, very excited about, um, joining our staff. So that is one. Um, another hire since our last meeting is Robert Higgins and we are moving him forward for the position of IT data and system specialist. Uh, he has a bachelor's degree in English, so that might sound odd, um, to have actually a journalist become a data person, but in fact, uh, that, it's all true. He has had quite a lot of experience, um, in this field, uh, not in education specifically, but, um, he has, he's been involved on the IT side in the journalism industry, uh, since nineteen eighty-seven. So I, I would say that he has a lot of tangential experience, um, but not specific to schools. Uh, he has a really, uh, great personality and a, a, a soft-spoken, uh, individual that I think will be very grounding, um, as we move forward, um, with our new systems. So that would be, uh, Robert Higgins for your consideration. And those are the only two professional, uh, staff positions that we have. That is not a certified, so Robert's position is not a certified, um, meaning he doesn't, it doesn't require a teaching certificate. It's, it wouldn't be a member of the teachers' association.
Right.
But it, it would be a professional position, so I'm, um, moving him forward, um, for consideration in that capacity.
So may I have a motion to approve the nomination of those individuals, um, as new IREs?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the end. I'm gonna ask for actually, a motion to go back in the non-public pursuit to I R S eight ninety-one A three, number two, P and C.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Zink.
Aye.
Zink, uh, aye.
Aye.
And I, unanimous, we are in non-public at eight forty on the nose. Write that down.
Mike, you want me to take the thing back? Cause I took, started taking notes on it.